Second by Councilman Milner, all in favor? All opposed?
Was there something else that needed to be changed on that side or just?
It's to change the name and have the council's approval collected on the contract.
So we can do that by saying Secretary, start with the right way?
Okay.
Motion carries, I see you. Okay, now we're going to go on to item two D. Consideration in action to authorize the wastewater collection system mapping and study entire city work order under the partners S A E. Ms. Turner?
I guess one of the things that I was. And the other thing you have been working on for some time, that was funded in the last fiscal year, it's also funded in this fiscal year, that you want a lot of water mining project for the water sewer project. Andrew is working on that, making updates, remember to do that. This is the actual approval of the cost of the engineering. I know it made several fifty thousand two, and we will call it now ninety seven thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And so this is the funded part, I know this is the sewer part. Now what has been funded and I don't need to run the parallel is actually the water portion of that. And so we bring that back for you so that we can run it together, but this is actually just for the mapping system of the sewer line. So, and Andrew, as for questions that you have, I'm happy to stand.
This is what we discussed.
And the engineer here as well.
Discussed a few, well, maybe like a year ago, where Larry Hymer, the engineer of various, presented the model, how we were going to approach it back then at the county courthouse. The only thing that that is, is the work order that Mr. Hymer company stayed, this is the cost, to get this funded. In the meantime, we have done some work on, both on the water and on the collection system. We've done some progress, but because of new businesses and new projects and things stagnated a little bit. But that has never been approved, so who are asking us to get that approved so we can move forward?
I have two questions. One, how much of this ninety seven thousand dollars is last fiscal year and how much of it is this coming fiscal year? And the second question is, Councilor, have you had a chance to review the work order, are there any issues?
So how much of the last fiscal year this year? I think last year, everything is up between five thousand dollars, it's coming over. That's correct. The amendment that you all approved at the end of last year covering the Jordan, the cost of that, it's about twenty five thousand one sixty that was budgeted and approved in this year's budget, to cover the cost.
Thank you.
Here, we'll give you the full budget in reference to budget. Did you have any questions, Sam?
Well, Councilor, this is the second part of my question.
No, I said I feel maybe you want to come and ask if you have any questions.
Do you have a question?
To answer the question on looking at the document, I have looked at it. If I can ask the Council, and I'm going to indulge Mr. Hymer, let me do this, please. If you look at the document that you have as part of your package and look at exhibit A of the document Mr. Hymer submitted, and look down under one B, and there's a dot there. Everybody found the button? The dot?
Model creation and setup.
Right. Model creation and setup is what we've been talking about now for some good long time. And basically, Burridge shall build a static wastewater spreadsheet model of the city sewer network within the study areas based on record information and data collection under test one A. And then he goes on to talk about the other item, and I'm going to let Larry address, and not try and get into his area. But this is the part that we never got when we had Melvin and Hunt do the last study. And this study, for the first time, would have mapping, which is what you've been struggling with. And then the mapping would give you enough opportunity to do the actual calibration, which in turn would allow you to have the map and calibration that lets you create the model. And Larry, with that, we could all go on those other parts of your project which goes through the rest of your contract. But yes, Mr. Melvin, I've looked at the contract, this is the same document we've been talking about for about a year, this is what we need.
This is the G I S program, Mr. Watson?
Not G I S, well, he's going to do part of this in G I S format, to answer that part of your question, yes.
What he's going to get, what he's going to provide is going to be electronic mapping.
Right.
Where I can take it and be, and be ready whenever we approve an opt out system here so we can continue our development. The other piece that he's going to give with all the information that I'm going to provide to him, he's going to give me a spreadsheet that will help with the model when we're building or adding them. Those are the pieces that he's waiting on me to get done. So Larry?
Well, I guess, you know, everybody's, you're right about the mapping, that's been the problem with past. And I guess back in airport one eight, we went ahead and created forty eight grids of the city and did that, and did that on that, using the Wilson County Police District locks, lock information, lock information, address information. So you have base maps that have all the street railways, all the addresses on them. And you're in the process now of adding and verifying information that was on your previous maps to put on that. But the end result of all this, you will have a digital copy of the city wastewater system. It will be, it will be plotted in forty eight grids, inch underscore grid, grids, or you can just plot a small portion of it. Again, you don't have a plotter at this time, but will provide you hard copies of that, those completed maps once they're done.
Right, and electronically as well.
Yeah, and also electronically as well, so you can use that, Larry, you get the technology and the computers to do that.
Right.
But on the spread, on the, the reason we're using the spreadsheet, we're not using a software that will house the city twenty thousand bucks alive. We're basically going to create a spreadsheet of the city sewer system that will, it's just using a Excel spreadsheet format. And it will allow the city to go into it, if there's a piece of property that's going to be developed, and you can plug in the values that I developed in that piece of property, and the spreadsheet will run and tell you if there's a capacity problem.
Right, right.
And that's the difference, I think, to the benefits of the city, because you'll be able to run that with what you got now, without having to spend money to buy some sort of a software that's typically pretty expensive. Now, later on, when the water model is done, that'll be a different process, where you actually have to use software that is expensive. We have that in our office, but the city does not have that, so whenever that comes up down the road, we'll look at that and see how best to handle that. But in ten years, we'll provide the city digital map of your sewer system that has been field verified, where the city staff and our survey crew will be picking up key points along those lines. And then you'll have a spreadsheet model that will allow Andrew to run a model, if somebody asks him, is there capacity for this ten acres development of this area? You can plug that into your model and determine if there's capacity or not.
See, the way I'm doing it right now is, if subdivision is coming up and there's going to be fifty houses, I determine, I have to determine, how many, how many people are going to be in the car house? What's the line size that we're going to need? What's the flow that we're going to calculate all that and come out with, with a flow that that particular subdivision is going to be coming out and going to one of our other stations to go back to the sewer pipe. But the spreadsheet will allow me to be a little quicker with it and more accurate.
I have a question. Mr. Hymer, what's the timeline on the spreadsheet?
Well, the study, you know, in our work order, we identified about four months period of time. Now that is somewhat dependent upon city giving us some information that we need, and Drew's been uncovering manholes that have been buried in the under pavement, those kind of things that take us some time. But we will complete our work, if we can get this information, we can complete within ninety days. But, especially, now, right, in our proposal and our work order, we would identify about a month, go through the work from the city staff to identify information that we need. And then it'll take us about ninety days to complete the study and the spreadsheet and come back to the city and here it provides you the, here's the mapping, here's the study. And the, that's, at this point in time, it is somewhat dependent upon city staff, but again, Andrew and I worked together on this for quite some time, and I think, again, I know he needs to have staff at times available, doing other jobs in the city, but we'll certainly help him as much as we can to make sure that we minimize the amount of work just folks have to do to verify line signs.
The difficulty with it is that, back in the olden days, nothing was mapped. And there are lines that we may not know of, or maybe you cut off manholes that have not been identified. And when we're going through this, we have to find these missing pieces. And that's what delays it, because we've got, we've got to get back roads and start digging around, trying to find out where that manhole may be, or where that clean out may be. So those are some of the delays that we're facing. And that's something I presented, Larry and I presented that, and I showed you all pictures and things that that's causing some, some type of issue.
Mr. Hymer, what do you think?
How many, I mean. I would say, in order to do the water and the collection system, I will at least need at least forty five people dedicated on it percent. And, and we don't want to have that. What we'll do is we'll attack, we'll attack sections, and which we've done, we've attacked sections and get them done as other projects that we got to complete, okay, done as well.
Why so many employees, Andrew?
Why?
You said that you need four employees right now?
Because we got at least two or three on the, on the collection side, and at least two on the water side.
The issue, the issue before us is proving this work order, which is the wastewater piece, that the water side will come back to us, okay? And this is funded in last year's budget and in this year's budget, it is critical to the growth of the city. I'm going to make the motion to approve the work order.
How easy transfer is it from a spreadsheet to something, say, in the future, once a city is set up in the, in the software side of it?
Well, I think the spreadsheet works well for the, for the city. I mean, there's really no software you can buy that identifies all kinds of things in your system, but for a city the size of Florida and for the foreseeable future, what you should need to know is how much flow is being generated by your system and how it's flowing through your system. You don't need, I mean, our analysis will identify if there's a capacity issue, we'll, we'll identify that in our study.
But there's no complications, is what I'm getting at, in transferring from a spreadsheet to, say, an operable?
No.
Okay.
And most software works, and the data that you put into a deep kind of software, it comes off a spreadsheet.
And at that point, you all will be doing the, you know, saying the, the conversion of the, the conversion of, from spreadsheet to, to say, the other program?
Yeah, but we can, but again, we're talking about the flex system model, our flex spreadsheet, the water model does require software that calculates the pressures and flows to a system, and that will be a separate task that will come back to the city at some point. Right now, Andrew is, I guess, when you're out on the site looking at sewer information, you're also on the maps we provided the city identifying valves and water information, just because he's out there. That water information, you're just going to keep that on the maps. And so whenever the time comes to go in and go forward with the model, for the model, you have that information already on the maps. So, we're not going to, we're not going to create a mapping of all the water system, it's going to be the sewer flush system. But he's identifying water information when he's out there. When he's out there, he's identifying valves and how lines are connected.
Is this the one that goes with that magical map that Andrew has had?
Right, right. And Eric, another thing is, we want to be able to do that. We want to be able to add, change this. And what Larry's going to provide with the spreadsheet and the PDF file, if I get an auto CAD system, I can convert that and have everything that I taught him. And then bring it up and add, and I go to Larry and say, hey Larry, I need, I need this map, I need this. And then he takes that and does it and sends us a map and calls with it, nothing against you Larry, but I calls with it. And we can start standing on ourselves and then use Mr. Hymer when we need to go through the new consultation and seal, and we can do that.
Okay, the motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilwoman Castillo, all in favor?
Mayor, before you take a vote, I just wanted to, Andy Johnson, citizen of Florisville, wanted to commend Andy Barrentas and Andrew Agnesiara for the work that they've done. Put in a lot of hours and effort to make this happen, a real good thing with Florisville, and you've taken the lead on that as a council. He's another one, he put that staff right there, the one that, that knew the labor, hard work every day, so, Andrew, good job, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, I see you. Now we're going to go on to item two D, number four. T M L conference, October the eighth through the ninth, twenty thirteen, Councilman Milner and Councilwoman Sherri Castillo.
I just put this up on the, on the agenda because I had a little confusion on who's going to, who's going to, I wanted to ask who's going to go to the T M L conference and who's attending and who's not. Uh, the council, who's going? What? Anybody else attending? Two? Anybody else?
Who was the second one?
My only concern was, now that we have the F N D C director, and even, I don't know, they've got their own budget, or, they might not attend, but I'm saying, there's other people that should be able to attend. I know at one time, I think Sherri Pauli, or Sherri here, she was, she was going to go to this conference and all of a sudden, some councilman told her that she wasn't going to be able to go. And then I hear, hear said, that even the city manager walked in and told her she wasn't going because she had to stay to run the city. You know, I think that there is a lot of important stuff to learn at the conference, like elections, she's in on the election, to learn about elections, to learn about all kind of thing. And if some councilman is going to tell her she can't go, or this councilman here can say she can go, because I'm not attending and she can go to my place. But it just, and I'm really the city manager, I respect you for coming in here, but this city has been running with leaving the chief of police in charge, or the assistant chief, or unemployed, or code compliance. And, and my thing was, and Sherri did not tell me to put this on here, but I think what's right is right, and what's wrong is wrong. So I'm always trying to see, why was the reason, city manager, for her not attending? What is your outlook of her not attending, if that is true, or what I've heard, I've heard?
Yes, sir, and first of all, I want to thank everybody that allowed me to go to the conference, because it's very important for me to be able to network and to be able to meet and learn all the Texan laws, because I do have a learning curve, to be able to do that. But as I spoke to Sherri in reference to that, and I was going around, running around with a tick on my head, trying to move and get settled in and roll my son, I'm learning more and more about your illustrious peanut festival. And did not realize at first when I came that actually, I understand that the city hall's closed because it's happened here. And I just imagined when they told me the crowds, that they would have the opportunity for the police department to do policing, and that Sherri could be here, because they're right, and you all have been running things very well without, definitely without me and without the manager in place. But I, but the short time I've been here, she definitely had been the backup and go to person. And so it was my opinion that she could stay while I was away, and other people were actually going to be in the public, out of service, so to speak. So it was my decision to ask her to not attend the conference this year, to allow me to go and not have to worry about having here. And let the police department do whatever they need to do in reference to the crowd, running around the city. Well, that was my opinion in reference to assignments for the conference itself.
It's not so much the police department, I think that we have fifty something employees here in the city of Florisville, and I believe that not just the city, the city police. I'm not talking about the city police being in charge, I'm talking about maybe Monica, maybe, I don't know, Ramon's been here, twenty something years in the city of Florisville, in the building. There is somebody else qualified, which, you know, there is a lot of election stuff coming up, and to leave her not to attend, and I think that that was already okay and approved by the old city manager. So, you know, to me, Mrs. Turner, I, I don't like that, you know, if it came out from you, it's fine, but I've heard that you were here, some councilman was here, and as soon as he walked out the door, you walked into her office and told her she wasn't going. And prior to that, that councilman hadn't even told her, instructed the mayor that she wasn't going to go.
Now, Councilman, let, I expressed an opinion to the mayor as to what I thought. Now, as far as the city manager's direction to employees, I'm going to tell you that I attest to the job of the city charter and says allows the city manager to run employees, regardless of my opinion of things.
Well, what is your suggestion of, why is, why is your thing not Sherri Pauli going to the conference? What is your view of that, prior to even, before the city manager got here?
I said it was my opinion.
Well, it's my opinion for her.
Councilman, allow me to answer your question.
Boy, I'm going to answer you too.
My comment to the mayor was not specific, my comment to the mayor was that I believe that city staff should not be attending the T M L conference. And the justification for that, Councilman, is the cost. It is not the cost of the conference to the city that is expensive, or the cost, it is the cost of the conference, it is the cost of the hotel, it is the cost of per diem, added to the salaries of those employees, that is the cost. So per city employee, we're talking twenty five hundred to thirty five hundred dollars to attend the conference. In my case, the city has paid three hundred and sixty dollars. I have paid for my own hotel, and I will not be collecting per diem, and I'm not, certainly not accepting a salary. My concerns were financial and fiscal, but they were expressed to the mayor. And as to the city manager, there was no direction given, and I do not have the authority to give the city manager direction as to city employees. The charter is clear, the council is responsible for hiring and firing the city manager and giving her direction for him, the hiring and firing of a municipal judge, and the hiring and firing of a police department. All city management is done by the city manager. And the charter is also clear, that says that the council shall not interfere with the city manager's operations.
Councilman, Miller, I think we are all familiar with what the charter says. In this particular case, this young lady had been approved to attend the conference way back before we even had the interim city manager. It was approved by Mr. Jostlin, I believe, and so she registered. What, I mean, education is so important, particularly when there are so many H R topics presented at this conference. I'm not sure what other opportunities we have of educating our city folks. I think education is extremely important, and if it's all possible, they should be able to attend. We have the, there's so many of us not going, and I don't know how many, how much was the budget given for this, but there's, there should be more than enough money to cover her expenses. And there should be someone to cover the city. I mean, God forbid that we think that with one extra person not being here, that the city cannot be protected, so.
Who's the, who's the next one then, in line to, to, to take on the reins, you know, if, if this city secretary isn't there?
We have our comptroller, and as we mentioned before, we have the police chief. In the past, we've always had the lieutenant. Who else have we had, Mr. Jostlin?
There were a few that could be here in the office, since the F N D C, there's no kind of persons that can, but it's, to me, it was just something that was.
The other thing that we can reach them by telephone.
I mean, people can be reached by telephone if there's an emergency. And Austin, isn't this conference in Austin, or just two hours away?
Uh, yeah, the conference is in Austin, but, but again, if I can explain my position, and I wasn't familiar with Mr. Miller's expression in reference to the attendance. My only thing as a new city manager, and as I had a chance to evaluate the staff very quickly, between me moving in and getting settled in, and even getting keys to my office and changing them, voice, my voicemail, was just to say that if there was a ghost person, it is your city secretary. And with a huge festival in reference to that, that was just a decision that I had made, that someone could be here just in case something exploded, something happened, I don't want it to happen, I want to be there for those few days. I understand the city hall is closed for those two days, and so the activity is there, and so that's why I asked for her to stay back here while we're there. Now, it's just a matter of how I operate, when I was the board city manager, there was a second person I had in charge, the private public director, public board director, we did not take vacation at the same time, because we did not want to have two of us out of the office at the same time. And I value Sherri's experience and her expertise, and I'm quite sure that she will definitely carry everything while I'm gone, but that was my request in reference to her feeding people while I'm out of town, trying to learn and to network and to meet some of the vendors that I should be physical with.
But I'm not going to interfere, but I hope that you reconsider by the time this conference starts. But the thing is, maybe you should be the one to stay behind, since you have all this education and all, all kind of degrees, and I think it's, Pauli can just barely learn and study, and I believe that she can, it can serve her well, you know, and, and, and one of them had to, you know, take it. But I'm not here to interfere, I mean, I say, well, this councilman tells me what to do, I'm not telling you what to do, I'm telling you to reconsider for her to go to the conference, because there is plenty of people here in the city of Florisville that can run the, 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 because all they're going to do is run it for two days, I think, because Thursday and Friday, the city is closed here. So what would be the difference? I, I think that since this whole council's not going, the one, there's plenty of money and a budget to be able to take care of the city secretary, and my concern was, she could learn a lot, just like you can learn, she can learn a lot.
I think my, my concern would, would, you know, would be the four days that are gone, and I know that even if the city's down for, for the two days, the tenth and eleventh, or the city's hall is closed for the tenth and eleventh, business still goes on and the phone still rings even after hours. And the, the next person that here in the city hall would, would be Monica to, to take care of, allow the, the, take up the slide. And, but even with the code compliance issue, you know, Miss Monica is, is still, you know, having trouble keeping up, you know, with the, with the regular job, much less to, to take on another, some, some, you know, another task for, for the four days, especially at the, at the busy time, at this busy time of the year. Had it been any other time, I don't think that, that, that there'd be an issue, but being that it falls into this, the festivities, I think that, I think that there's a, a problem with the, with having too many people out, or somebody that's knowledgeable enough to report.
Well, I'm just going to say this, you know, I feel that one councilman wants to run the show here, and he's not going to run the show, because even when you came in late, you were supposed to be here on the first. I came in here at eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, one, not to be seen.
Councilor, will you personnel issues?
No, I'm just saying, I'm just.
That should be done in executive session.
No, I'm saying, I'm not going to get, um, but I'm just saying, you know, your job was to report to the city of Florisville, not to Jim Reddick, and supposedly, nobody knew where you were at, but a phone call was to Jim Reddick. And, and you were hired by the city of Florisville, you should have called the city secretary, you should have called somebody and said, okay, this is it, I'm going to leave it alone. But, you know, I'm not saying that that's happening, but to me, it does seem like it's happening. happening. I hope and I wish the best for you here in the city of Florisville. I hope the best, wish you the best. But here, you come and do your job and that is it. And I do this, this, we're not gonna interfere, but I know that there is interference here. I know there is, but I'll even at that, but I hope you reconsider letting Sherry Pollock go to the conference. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we're gonna go on then to three, executive session. I just enter executive session pursuant to section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four of the Texas Government Code Personnel Matters to deliberate the appointment, interim employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, city manager. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session?
Yeah, I guess so, Mayor.
Um, I looked at your agenda for tonight, and I looked at the topic, and the only thing
since this lady is now employed by seven days, that really fits topically here are duties. And topically, when I look at her contract and I look at the contract with the manager who's just expired and the exhibits thereto, um, I don't see that there's anything to discuss since she's given a period of time in which she's supposed to report back to you with her proposed changes on the organization chart, her proposed duties that she wants to assume in terms of her work program, her goal program. It just seems like you've already got a document in place, sort of been signed, identical to the fire manager, he's got the same identical annexes. Um, I don't see what's to be accomplished in executive session that's really within the spirit of the Open Meetings Act since the duties were all spelled out already. It's just my observation that this is probably something that's totally unnecessary.
And that was my question, why would we have an, an executive session so early?
Well, I think the idea was to have some of the goal setting and some of that, but the problem is we don't have an action item afterwards. So my suggestion or my recommendation to you is, is to allow Mr. Turner, time, contact, commonplace, for her to evaluate her employees, to evaluate what's been ongoing in terms of goal setting, to evaluate what the budget calls for, and to evaluate with each of you individually as council members, what your objectives are that you would have her undertake and report that back to you in a fashion that we can then take action on by amending one of these documents, if that's appropriate, or adopting her document, if that's your choice. But it seems to me after seven days and just, just barely getting her breath, that tonight's meeting is unnecessary and there's no opportunity for actually after you talk tonight anyway, there'd be more production for you to take this up at the next meeting.
And I agree with you, should we make a motion to cancel the executive session?
Well, or just...
Do we need?
Just simply don't do it.
Okay. First time I can know who requested, who reported the agenda?
That was my request, so that after the city manager having the opportunity to meet one-on-one with each of the council could go over these objectives collectively as a council. Because of the lack of the, the action item and based upon the requ, recommendation of council, I agree that this gets postponed till the meeting on the twenty-fourth. But it is clear that we as a council must collectively provide guidance to the city manager. And that was the reason this was requested for the agenda, so that we as a council, okay, after having one-on-one meetings with the city manager could collectively provide guidance. But due to the lack of the action item, that's not possible tonight, and I concur with the council that this should be delayed till the meeting on the twenty-fourth.
When you say, I'm sorry, the lack of, what is it you're talking about, the lack of action items?
I'm just suggesting that you focus on this or...
I know what you said, because of lack of something.
An action item.
Has it, it does not have an action item, it's possible.
And who checked her agenda, just out of curiosity?
I'm sorry?
Who checks her agenda?
I don't wanna do one, I get it.
So you did not get the...
I did not get it.
No, I am wrong.
Well, I didn't get it. I was here in Florisville in my office, fighting, unless my staff was helping.
Sure. He, he was included, Tom was included, I would rather do that as well, I think.
No, we, we got it.
I'm making a motion, I just take no action.
Okay. Second? My second. Alvin Fagan?
All right.
All the votes? Here is five zero. There was an action item, there's...
There's just no action taken, it doesn't require...
The meeting's at eight-thirty-five.
I have something. Uh, what the city council just did is very unprofessional. That's totally disrespectful towards you and towards the, the city, um, manager. Because we're, we're, y'all just fighting on with some little things, we got, a lot of things coming up. November the 11th, we got Veterans Day. What are your plans for Veterans Day? What are your plans for Veterans?
Certainly, everybody... What do you mean you don't care? You expect me to change? I see. Okay, we need to take this out. We need, we need to stop. Both of you are, you're the dogs.
To take him outside, not to take him inside. But when the city, you don't come to me like that, you don't come to me like that, because you're just very worse. You guys fuck with that, how we care for the city, and then you quit. And he takes off work, he's like...
Just for the council.
You don't have to come in like that, he's up for mayor, he's up for mayor, he's for citizens, just like I am. Before it something happens, is that... Well, he didn't wanna keep his teeth, he didn't wanna keep his teeth. Well, tell him...
You don't wanna keep going, yes.
Pissed me off. Sorry.
That was good. Thank you. You didn't like it?